I'd like to call the meeting order for March twenty-sixth, two thousand and five. Start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, warrant and bills, all signed.
Yes.
Uh, proof of the agenda?
We do proof the March twenty-sixth agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, minutes of the last meeting?
Move to proof the minutes from March nineteenth.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, town administration, weekly update.
All right, um, first, uh, things to go over are regarding the transfer station. Um, and just so that, it looks like I'm stepping on Mr. Walsh's toes originally. He didn't think he was gonna join us tonight, so they got put on my list. Um, so I just wanna review them and I appreciate the superintendent being here, um, as we go over them. First is to ask the select board, um, your intentions or thoughts on the transfer station with town meeting. In the past, we have closed, uh, the transfer station during town meeting. However, uh, the staff doesn't normally or have they attended, so many residents and non-property owner, non-voters have asked that it stay open. Um, so when speaking to Ed today, we kind of had the conversation that leave it open, we'll give the staff the option of going, and we'll see who wants to go and we can kinda, you know, adjust and shuffle from there if necessary, but.
We could go take a, I can take a spot somewhere.
Oh, no, you.
So that, my only concern would be is the intention behind closing was to encourage more attendings at town meetings?
Yeah, but it does, and it only makes them angry.
It doesn't work, yeah.
It may not encourage, but I, I do feel it will take away some, maybe potentially people who wanna leave early or come late. That, that's my only thing, but on that, I'll go with.
The one thing I've heard, oh, go ahead.
How many holidays do our employees have?
I'd have to look at the policy, I mean, there's probably a dozen or so, depending on what day of the week they fall on.
Yeah, the transfer station, it only affects three days of the week.
Right, but they get the Monday holidays.
Yeah.
They get all the Monday holidays and, um, of course, when it's a bad winter, we get all the snow days.
Yep, and they're paid for that.
And we are only open three days and.
It's a Saturday. Town meeting is on a Saturday.
I understand that. Um, it's in April, so we are not opening on Sunday. I guess I'm concerned generally about the number of days the transfer station is closed.
Well, I think the only way, the only really way.
I don't wanna be unfair to the transfer station employees, but it, it, I do, I am concerned about when you go.
They haven't shown an interest.
You see the number of days they're closed, it's.
And that's why we're recommending keeping it open, they haven't shown an interest to go into town meetings.
Well, I mean, before we tell them.
They're working on Sunday.
I think before we tell them they're working on Saturday, I think probably John at the transfer station asked them, do you guys plan on going to the meet? If, if, the problem is if you don't, and somebody does wanna go, or a couple of people do.
Yeah.
Then you're understaffed.
Right.
So, you probably ought to at least make sure that we're not gonna be understaffed, say two of them say they're gonna go, and then you're all, you know, so, that, or you close it on Saturday and have it open on Sunday.
Do you have any idea, John, for this conversation coming from the staff?
Hi, John.
Oh, I didn't even, I didn't see him back there.
No, that's okay, I was hiding back here. Uh, so I asked a couple of the folks, I didn't.
Come around here on the podium.
Okay, yes. I'm John, Superintendent of the Transfer Station. I did talk to a couple of the folks, I didn't get a very positive response as far as going, or as far as, um, uh, coming to the town hall meeting.
So, so, I mean, I have no problem leaving it open as long as we're not infringing on their opportunity to go to the town meeting.
Do you wanna confirm with them?
And I can confirm with them, sure, and if anybody does, I mean, uh.
We, we can wait until next week.
Yeah, we'll wait until they make a decision next week, but, um, so just let us know that you've decided if they wanna go or not. Since then, we'll, we'll go with it, but past practices, they, I mean, they have not gone.
Right, exactly.
And I would, I would say too, I might, if you're gonna close Saturday, open Sunday.
I like that, I, that's a good little sink ground, I'd rather go back.
You could still do it that way, if you're worried about how many people come to town meeting.
Yeah, that might be happy.
It might not be a bad thing to do anyway, so for that reason.
I like that idea.
So, uh.
This is no reflection on the employees down there, please, don't misunderstand. It is simply, it's an important service, it's only open a few days a week, and we oughta make sure that people are.
And we don't wanna inconvenience the town either, so, could you possibly, uh, ask them, I mean, I guess, if, if we, if we, if we, if we close on Saturday, open on Sunday, if they would be willing to do that?
Okay.
And then come back to us next week and let us know?
Sure, be happy to.
Okay, awesome, thank you, sir.
Sure.
May want to stay for a moment. Yeah, close. So, um, I, I just wanna make a, you know, a public statement and make sure that the public knows that this is coming from the select board and not so much the superintendent or the employees. You know, that, um, the transfer station has always strived to enforce the rules set by the town of Acton in regards to transfer station stickers. Um, John has taken a huge step towards this and is really addressing it, um, and it settles better with others than, you know, with some than others. The Board of Selectmen have, you know, put this policy forward that you have to have a sticker on your vehicle. It is not optional, you could be here the longest resident in the town of Acton, you could own thirty houses, you have to have a sticker. Um, so it is to the point that they are turning people away if you don't have a sticker on your vehicle. It can be a selectman, it can be, you know, the town's oldest resident, you don't have a sticker, you don't dump. Do not take it out on the transfer station employees. Come here to this podium and take it up with us, take it up with this, these five gentlemen. Stickers are required.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
They can get a sticker right away, what's the issue?
They won't drive over and get it, they will not stop. They don't have their registrations on them, Tom, they don't want to, you should know me by now, it's, it's just a list of excuses.
They don't have their car registrations for them?
That's the same look I had when he told me that.
They have used that, excuse my registration, it's not in the car.
It's not in my car.
Back in the day, I got refused.
I must have been each other.
So, yeah, I just wanna make, you know, go on. I wanna go on the record by saying that, you know, this is a select board policy, also the license plate number is written on the sticker, which means that that sticker needs to go to that vehicle. There are no community stickers, you don't get to pass it around. They're gonna start looking at the plate number written on the sticker to make sure it's the plate on your license plate. If it's not, you have to go get a sticker, so, as of today, I mean, they've been very lenient, they've been trying to get them to go around, but they're just not, so.
I support them doing it.
Perfect, so.
Doesn't, doesn't cost a damn thing to get a sticker.
It doesn't cost anything, we are gonna be.
Well, it's only one week, they can leave the garbage in the back of the truck and put it in the next week there and come to town hall, get your sticker and be done with it.
You can get them at the transfer station.
Well, I know, but for whatever reason, they aren't doing it there, they're.
And I've spoken to my staff, we are being more, um, insistent on when they register, we're asking them, you know, do you use this vehicle for the transfer station? We're now offering, trying to pass the stickers out on the spot, so, don't be alarmed if you get turned away at the transfer station, and again, address your concerns with this board.
And the reason we do this is a cost reason.
Absolutely.
There's a cost of disposing all of this, and if we have people who are dumping there that shouldn't be dumping, we're all paying for that.
Right, you are.
Well, we're trying to make the, uh, point that we're at least trying to cut back reasons.
Costs, costs matter, so, you know, we often hear people say that, you know, so-and-so dumps area, doesn't live in Acton, and this is the only way we can enforce it, we have to check, so, John, we appreciate this job you and your staff is doing. How did it go today with our first real foot down?
Uh, it went well.
Good.
Yeah.
We were very, we were very.
Well, we, we were a little.
I, I got told, don't dump unless you go over and get a sticker.
Right, but now they're not letting them dump.
I don't go up, my wife's done, but she doesn't have one, so I don't.
You can't dump unless you go get a sticker.
Good for him.
Yeah, it's fine, that's the way it should be.
Good.
We, we get a lot of excuses, somebody will come in and say, well, I'm waiting for work, but I can't, I can't go right now, I can't, you know, but they have the time to come and dump their stuff.
I like the gentleman that has no license plates on his vehicle, that's why you can't get one.
Once you have it, it's done.
I've also heard that, well, I don't know, I'm not getting a sticker, I'll just go dump it in Newfield.
Perfect.
Dump it where?
Newfield.
That's fine.
Perfect. Did you hear, John, uh, they told me one today, that the gentleman's reason he couldn't get a sticker, cuz he had no license plate on his truck, on the corner of the back.
That's probably not a good thing.
I was like, what?
We actually had a four-wheeler come in with a trailer a few days ago, I knew, four-wheeler.
Well, there is a plate, there is technically a sticker on that, but.
Right.
Well, we support you.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I do, just one quick question about the Saturday, Sunday. Um, so Saturdays, we're open from eight to four. If we were going to switch days and do Sunday.
Same hours.
Would you, what, would the hours be?
Same hours for that, that day, I would think.
Yeah.
It's only one day.
Yeah.
Okay.
One shot deal.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Is that good?
Uh, so the last thing is also transportation related, but more just an update to the board. Um, so, uh, John and Ed and I worked today on proofing the numbers from the sets of bids. Uh, we know there has been a little, uh, social media activity on these, um, bids. Originally, like I said, we didn't think that Ed was gonna be able to join us, so this is an agenda item next week. Uh, we want everybody to come to the meeting so we can set it clear as to why we went out to bid twice, where it's at, and the, the total tons and the costs that we've spent the last couple of years, so John is working on all those numbers. Uh, stay tuned, spreadsheet is ready, we'll, uh, to make a presentation to you next week for a decision.
Appreciate that.
Twenty-three numbers to.
Yep, twenty-four is perfect, thank you.
Okay.
All right. You're a free man, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, transfer, uh, the, uh, spreadsheet was in today to, um, talk to me about his yearly Ed McMahon and McDonald's safety grant programs through main municipal, something he's applied for, uh, each year. It's gotta be something for slip trips and falls, um, he's applied the last couple of years and has qualified, it's up to three thousand dollars for more of an FYI, but he's gonna try to find something to qualify to apply for that. Uh, reminder that we are not meeting on Wednesday, April ninth, so we will meet next week, the second, not meeting the following week of the night. Couple of, uh, planning board menus notices, we have a site walk for Thursday, April third at five o'clock for the Fairgrounds variety on the corner of one oh nine and Milton Mills. And also a public hearing on Thursday, April seventeenth, uh, for the discussion of the site plan review for the Fairgrounds variety, um.
Is, is there a document that describes what that Fairgrounds variety, uh, complex is gonna look like?
So Jason would possibly have some draft in his possession, so it's not something that's on the.
No, just so I could read about what's being planned.
Is there a proposed plan they could look at? Can you email it or is it large?
Uh, no, I have all PDF forms.
All right, just email it to me, thank you.
You can, I was, I was looking through.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, let's send it to the full board or send it to me.
Yeah, just my caller on up here.
I wasn't, I wasn't, uh, paying attention, I was reading an email, so.
Just any information.
What were we talking about?
Any information on the Fairgrounds public hearing?
Yeah, okay, so, no, I do have, uh, full PDFs, um, I can send it to you, you'll have their whole breakdown, hours of operation that they're proposing, all that stuff, so.
I've heard so many different things about it, I just would like to know what's actually being.
Yeah, you, you, you'll get the same thing that I, I.
Great, thank you.
Is this something we should put on our website?
I don't do it for anybody else, so I really, I don't know if I really should.
No, it's a good idea, no, I, I didn't know if this is something we've done before or not.
No, I'll put site plans and stuff like that, I, I, I'll put, uh, site walks, public hearings, things like that, but I don't, I don't put, if somebody wants to come into the office, they more than welcome to look at something, um, but I don't, I don't put it out there, and I feel that I should.
This has a lot of buzz, I don't know if you guys are getting that, but.
Well, it's, it's.
People, if, if, it, it's, it's different from person to person, about what's gonna be happening down there, and, um.
Depends where you live.
You know, huh?
Depends where you live.
No, I mean, but the, the components of what's going on down there, some are, I've heard very large things and others smaller, and I've, I've heard people express concerns about it, I personally don't have any, but it would be great if, if the public wants access to that, do they have to contact your office?
Contact my office and, uh, yeah, that's typically how we, we do it.
We've been informed.
Yeah, perfect, and you'll email that over to the full board.
The process is going fine.
It is, it is, um, we have, uh, our plant, our site planner helping us, um, work with that one, um, planning board's working with it, we're gonna keep that tighter, but, um, I think they're doing a very job, um, I think the applicant, the application's a good, uh, a good thing, um, so, we'll see, um, how it works out.
A good time to bring up what happened, yeah, right?
No.
Okay.
Continue.
Um, I mean, it was a public meeting, but Jason is going to address it on the board's behalf.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, I mean, when, when did you say that public hearing was?
April seventeen.
I think that's, you know, more people that go to that, the better, either opposed or.
To hear the, yeah, to hear the actual facts on it, sometimes, you know, like social media.
They will give you a complete rundown at the public hearing of the scope of the project, if anybody wants to see it.
I mean, they've already talked about it, a couple of planning board meetings I've attended, they've done a good job explaining it, people just have to watch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all I have, David.
That's all you got? Okay, we're down to ladies on update.
Oh, okay, APAT, nothing happening. Um, warrant finance, um, I believe they had one meeting to complete the, the final two articles, I did not attend. Uh, there really wasn't, wasn't much discussion there. Uh, municipal finance, uh, we needed to come up with some additional cash to cover a large, um, payment to this, to the town, they were paying tuition for Samford. Uh, but we're still doing quite well, and, um, between Jennifer and Lauren, they arranged to move some money around. I've been primarily working on, um, reviewing the financial statements and, um, getting whatever information I think I need from those, and also continuing to review, uh, the budget. And in particular, going back and looking at the trending on budget increases over the last four years. Um, and, uh, at some future meeting, I'll have something to share with you about that. Uh, it's good news, but I, I, I wanna get it out in the public, 'cause I think, quite frankly, I think it reflects very well on the board and the town and, and the public, I didn't see that information.
I think after this last budget process, that'd be good to hear.
Yeah, that's right.
You all, you all done?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ed?
Sure. Transfer station, uh, like Jennifer said, we're working on the stickers, they're working on the stickers up there diligently, to make sure everybody has them, we're gonna be bringing that up probably every week for the next bunch of weeks, just to keep it in the public's, uh, ear. Uh, Mary Grant had a meeting last Saturday, I was not able to attend, but I have the notes from the meeting. Uh, they've discussed the food that they're gonna be doing at the town meeting, uh, they're gonna handle, you know, like a little snack bar, whatever someone wants, water, coffee, uh, cocoa, tea, stuff like that. They got some muffins and some breakfast sandwiches and cookies, so it sounds pretty good. Um, also on Mary Grant, they've tied the, uh, cleanup for Mary Grant with the townwide cleanup, so that'll all be the same day, uh, they'll be looking for, for help for that. I think they're starting that at eight-thirty in the morning, and it should go, you know, be done by noon time or so. Uh, their schedule, again, I think I mentioned this back along, but spring cleanup is April twenty-sixth, they're gonna have a community picnic on July twelfth, and the pumpkin party is October eleventh. Um, the next meeting's May tenth. That's what I have on Mary Grant. Uh, animal control, he's still working ahead, uh, he had a call this week, I think it was actually in Chapley.
It was.
Uh, was that square or Mousom?
Mousom.
Mousom, uh, to where they had a, there was a dog, they got out on the ice. The homeowner found the dog on the ice, got a hold of a kayak, hopped in it, went out, they were able to re, they, she retrieved the dog, she ended up in the water with the dog.
The dog was in the water.
Yep.
The dog fell in, yeah.
Yeah, the dog fell in.
And then she fell in.
Yeah, they all, they all fell in, anyway, um, it, she took a trip to the hospital, uh, all's okay, the dog's okay, but I found a fire in Chapley Fire and our ECO was out there with that, so, um, they all did a great job.
That's awesome. Could've ended a lot worse.
It could've, but if she did end up with a hateful thing, man.
We should do.
Yeah, but, yeah. That's all I have.
Dan?
Um, no updates from the fire department, the recreation committee that was scheduled for Monday was postponed due to weather, it's gonna take place this Friday, they are gonna be talking a lot about the upcoming baseball season, it does look like it's gonna be, um, okay, did I word that, night classes, not routines, clinicals, um, so they're having something coming, they're gonna discuss what those clinicals may look like and turn up the timeline for that. Um, and no updates on the conservation enforcement committee, um, just a random update that I did attend the last May municipal legislative policy committee, which you folks, um, nominated for, um, so that was this past Thursday, the twentieth, so I can do.
What are they talking about?
Um, we're just going over bills though, whether the MNA wants to support or not support, or, or reasoning why, so, just a lot of bills.
Okay, what's up? What's that? John?
All right, um, only half of the school department is tomorrow night at five-thirty in the gym, they're gonna do their public camera for their budget for next year. Uh, planning board, uh.
Listen, they sent me the note updates.
It's already, it's already been taken care of. Uh, oh, the, the other thing with the school is, Tom had a question last week about the decline in enrollment, and two of the things that I mentioned, the eighth grade class was bigger than incoming, that's one reason, uh, enrollment's down.
Yeah.
Um.
So is that like a bulge class, you think?
Yeah, it was a big class, um, some people have moved out of town, and there are other people that are pulling their kids and gonna homeschool. That was the third one that I wasn't sure, I, I was in touch with Mr. Ross this week, and that was the one that I didn't, um, know about.
Thank you.
Yep, and, uh, I have nothing for cemetery.
Cool, thanks. Um, roads, I'm in contact with Will, kinda keep monitoring the road posted situation there, and, um, yeah, and, uh, that's all going well, and the municipal grounds, I don't have an update right now, so. Okay, department head, committee chair updates, any? Joyce?
Yeah, Warren, Joyce Vasch, Warren Chair, vice chair.
Yep.
Warrant and finance, I should say, we did make two weeks ago, we voted on both of the articles, and we will be going to the school public hearing tomorrow night at five-thirty, and I really encourage everybody to go.
Yeah.
To go, uh, and, and I will say this, a lot of times, the only people who've been there are the teachers, uh, several teachers, not all of the teachers, several teachers, the school committee, Mr. Ross, David, and Warren and Finance, and that, and, you know, people. We're talking about over six million dollars, go to the meeting, it's really important.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty. Did you vote Richard Nass?
At Richard Nass, that's right, I mean, at, yeah, yeah, you're right, at the Richard Nass, yeah.
The school operating books are out too as well, and find them.
Oh, great.
Right on the counter, right there, on budget.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? I don't see, I guess the old business, we're down to new business, June ballot questions.
Okay, so I have, um, a meeting scheduled with Brad Moore tomorrow afternoon to work on the, uh, the word, verbiage of these articles, so it's hoping we could go through them, and just get a consensus that it's something the board wants to move forward with these different items before we take the time to write them, so, um, first is, I think the snow plowing, everybody's on the same page with, uh, we won't know, um, so, so here's the issue with snow plowing, so, we're gonna have to sign this warrant calling for this referendum election, I'm gonna say either the sixteenth of April or the twenty-third of April, 'cause it has to be forty-five days before the election. So originally, we had talked about, let's see what happens on April twelfth at town meeting, and then immediately go out to bid for snow plowing. I don't know if that's gonna give you enough time to come up with that number on the ballot, so we may do a up to or not to exceed, um, but.
It's dangerous to, uh, never.
I don't, I don't know how else we can, how else we can do it, because you have to sign the order for a referendum.
It would not be to the town's best interest to put in a fake number.
Right.
Okay, it was kinda like, um, when we, we voted, we did the town shed down here, right? So we voted on five hundred thousand dollars, well, what do you think the price came on that?
Right.
Four hundred and ninety some thousand dollars.
You'd rather do a, take, uh, if necessary, and I'm gonna confirm the timeline with Brad tomorrow, but if the order of the referendum has to be signed forty-five days before the election on June tenth, that brings me at quick counts, somewhere around April twenty-fifth, you've gotta sign it at a meeting, so even April twenty-third.
So what's the issue again? I, I follow those dates, but what's the concern?
The issue is that, as I understand it, you're not, if, we have to wait until a town meeting on the twelfth comes and goes to go out to bid for a three-year winter plowing.
June twelfth, yes.
No, April twelfth, so we're gonna have town meeting April twelfth, the article may or may not pass regarding allowing you to go out to contract for a three-year winter plowing, we know that we only have X amount of money appropriated in an article, so you need to appropriate the difference. Originally, we had planned, put it, planned on putting it on a June ballot, but you need that number, because like David says, you don't wanna put a, a blank checkbook.
Yeah, if you put three fifty, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna go from, you're gonna be at sixty, six hundred dollars a mile, you know, that's what you're gonna go for. You might get sixty-five, 'cause they know that money's available, so, um, I, I'd like to really see a number before we put anything on a ballot.
And it just, I mean, for the sake, I mean, today is already on the twenty-fifth, so it doesn't, I mean, to go out to bid now.
You, you, you don't wanna go out to bid now, then it doesn't pass.
Well, I, but it would be contingent on, just trying to buy us some more time, contingent on the article passing in town meeting, I mean.
That's what I would do.
I mean, that's, but, but that's, you know, I don't, but that's, are we gonna get a contract written that well that we can, you know, we can show it to contractors to look at, I mean, today's the twenty, what, fifth, sixth?
I don't, I don't wanna rush this process.
Well, then.
Why don't we, if, if we can't get it in time, I wouldn't suggest putting on.
It would have to have a special town meeting in July or August.
You need a contract drafted in order to do the RFP?
Well, somebody might, you know, it might decide if they're gonna bid on it, depending on the amount, yeah.
You definitely need a contract, 'cause if you don't have a contract.
Right, because let's just say the contractor might not be interested if he can't go out until there's three inches of snow on the ground, you know what I mean? It, we've gotta have the specs ready for the contract to sign.
I understand you need specs, but that's different than a contract.
Oh, so you mean, to put the RFP out?
Specify in the RFP what the, what the expected conditions are the town has for a contractor, but don't draft a contract un- until we've made a selection. And they should know, based on their bid, generally, what's gonna be in that contract. I would never write a contract before I had.
I don't think there would be anything in the contract that would make someone not bid on it, but the specs.
Oh, sure.
The specs, so definitely.
So, for instance, okay.
The, the specs definitely, I think, would make someone not go, not.
So, for instance, it, you could have verbiage.
So we would want the specs out there.
You could have verbiage in that contract, and it, you know, and it, like the Shap, the Chapley contract that I signed, okay? Um, they, they allow us so much material, so much salt to use, okay? And after that's used up, you know, there's verbiage in this, and they can charge us on top of whatever, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of guys, look at that, I'm staying away from that, okay? Um, because they can charge me per ton for every yard, over, every ton over that.
Right.
So they gotta know that stuff's in there, although that, that changes, that changes the whole ballgame.
Typically, a contract would be negotiated. It's not, we write the contract and they have to accept it. We put out the specifications, they bid on those, we accept someone's bid, we draft a contract, we have a discussion with the contractor, we negotiate those terms, and then have a final contract, that's typically the process.
That's not how this process works at all, because the problem is that when you send this out to everybody, everybody's supposed to bid on the same exact thing, 'cause my price is gonna be different than the next guy coming, as, well, I'll give you a better price, we'll negotiate this down, well, I've already priced it, 'cause this is what you asked for. So you, you've gotta have apples and apples, you can't have apples and oranges here.
I, I think that regardless of which way we go, specs or the contract, and, I mean, I do, I do think that, I mean, past towns' practice has been have a contract out there for everybody to look at, they see every page of it, they decide, I mean, ju- just because of the road issue, it, it, I, I think that David's right, but in any event, I don't know how we can possibly pull it off with a forty-five day, so you, I'm gonna confirm everything with, with Brad tomorrow, but you're probably gonna end up voting on that in a special town meeting in July or August.
I mean, I have no, no problem pushing it off.
Okay.
And myself, typically, guys don't bid on, okay, Chapley puts theirs out in, uh, in the February, 'cause it's a March meeting.
Right.
Okay, but most contracts come out in the fall, that's when everybody gets amped up to do all their snowplow contracts, so to get guys that bid on snowplowing in July, you know, it's usually in the back burner, so, either you do it, well, it's end of, you know, springtime, or you do it in fall, but we don't, obviously, we don't wanna wait too long, because if we get this huge number that comes in and over exceeds what we think it's gonna be, and then we have to figure out, or, you know, what we're gonna do here.
Or the special town meeting fails.
What the road commission's gonna have to do to make it work, 'cause we can't afford to bug, and that could very well happen, um, so.
So we'll see what happens in April, um, we'll start the process right away, start working on the specs, the contract, but I'm just giving you a full warning, it's probably not gonna be on the June ballot.
Good.
Probably be a special town meeting in July or August, but it's safe to assume if we can get it on, they will support that, that's one of the articles you agree on, right?
Yep.
All right.
Obviously, if it gets voted on in, in April here, that we're gonna go out to bid, then that's what we have to do.
I know, I'm just asking. I know, I'm just asking. The um sheriff and the car, so the question is going to ask them if they want to continue um with the services of the York County Sheriff's Department, not to exceed twenty hours, shared with the town of Shapley for X amount, seventy-seven thousand, give or take, and fifty percent of the car will put in exact total. It's all gonna be in the same article, so you either pass it or fail it, we don't want the car pa-, you know, we don't want him, the contract passing and then not the car, so. Do you guys all support that going on there?
Yes.
And it's a one-year contract, is what we're asking.
So they want to do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you've done, one year for the sheriff.
Are they offering more than one?
Um he, they are off, you've signed a one-year, but he has offered up to three, but the the price would vary, well, actually, let me rephrase, it has to be one year, because we're putting the seventy-seven thousand in there. Because after that, the number's going up every year, so it has to be one year, right? Because we're only asking them.
Is that all we've ever done is one year?
In the very beginning, we did three, but it's been one year since he changed it, yeah.
I thought my understanding was he didn't wanna do.
But he's got more staff now, the last time he met with us, he told us.
Just like with the auditors, we have uh I don't know if we do it with our auditor, but I've done it in the past, where you have them bid on a three-year engagement with the the second and third year being, you know, conditional, that either party could back out of, but the price was fixed.
Right.
They said, subject to a three percent increase or a four percent increase. And so maybe some kind of a three-year contract that would allow either party to break year second and third, but would sort of establish what we think the rate of increase would be in that second and third year.
Can we vote on a three-year with approval?
Does that mean, yeah, that's exactly.
Then you'd have to, you'd have to figure out the money, yeah.
No, 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 I'm saying, it's, it's, it it basically, uh what it does, it's tried to nail them down to what kind of increase.
With the same.
And that's what we did, like with the the demo.
And and I think you do with the auditors, do you not?
Um they haven't in the last couple of years, they only wanna do one-year contracts.
They only wanna do one.
For staffing, they have.
But didn't they specify the the out-year increases? So, I don't know, it's just a thought, uh so we don't have to worry about this, we just get to the second year, and both parties agree, we're just gonna continue.
I think for this ballot question, based on your public hearing that you had, you told the voters that we'd ask them if they even wanted to continue at all.
Oh, I agree, we should, yeah.
So just do the one year and the car.
All right, okay.
Does that, because, is that what you wanna do?
Yep. So you definitely need to ask. That one question we'll take care of.
All right, uh the municipal, so everybody's in favor of putting that on the bar, on the ballot, the municipal car. So right now, the number you, I think that they came up with was about thirty-five thousand.
I I believe we will, the treasurer maybe was working on an analysis of what we spend annually in mileage for the town hall, including the code office. Do we know what that number is, and does this, is it break even at least, or is there a net cost or savings?
Well, I mean, if you buy the car outright, we definitely don't pay thirty-five thousand in mileage. You know, the question is, how many years is that car gonna last, and then break it down, I mean, you know, I, it it, off the top of my head, I mean, I'd say maybe the mileage is for the code officer is what, four thousand?
Forty-five, around forty-five hundred.
Forty-five, I mean, the treasurer's is probably a couple of thousand with all her bank runs, I think mine is a thousand.
Oh, that's like five hundred a month.
We budgeted for six for the code officer.
Isn't that like five hundred a month, did I do the math right on that?
For what, the six thousand? So he has a budget of six, yeah.
Yeah, it's like five hundred a month.
Right.
Um it seems to me you could, and first off, I don't know why we put the cash out. I'd look at a lease. And why do we wanna own this thing?
We still have to pull it to a lease.
No, no, I understand, but then, we don't have a thirty thousand dollar cash outlay, we have an annual expense of whatever the lease payment is.
We looked at the leases, because um for what my uh mileage was, and combined with the treasurer's and the town administrator, uh we would be under.
Right.
Mileage.
By by, so each, third year, we'd be, we'd be, yeah, we'd be saving money.
Yes.
Um they, I was told to come back with without a lease, they they wanted to commit to the complete car.
They being who?
I don't know, I was just, I was saying.
Mileage is also a concern, not to interrupt you, mileage is a concern on leases, because, you know, the amount, if we're limited to mileage between his inspections and bank run two or three times a week, we also don't wanna get ourselves in a situation where over mi-, you know, we're over miles.
No, and and I'm not trying to get this personally, all that precise, but if if we currently have baked into the budget, six thousand dollars a year for mileage, and let's say you need a thousand for
a lease.
Uh for, no, uh uh you need a thousand of that for this other mileage that you might incur beyond what you can use a car for, it gives you five thousand dollars, it's like four hundred dollars a month. My guess is you can lease a car for three years for a hell of a cheaper than that. And so why wouldn't we do that? So we don't have to come up with the down payment or the total, the total outlay, and and then at the end of three years, we don't, don't wanna continue, we just?
Well, the the nice thing about a lease too is, you know, the oil changes and all the mechanical stuff that comes with it.
Depends, some of that.
You could have it at it.
You pick a wear and tear, but then that, any mechanical problems, it's always under the bump of a bump of warranty for the first three years, so.
Well, and.
Any major repairs would be taken care of under that lease thing.
I would not buy it, given these numbers.
I'm not in favor of buying, I'm not in favor of buying.
No, but but we can tell them it would be a commitment of, you know, approximately, a a three or four-year commitment of a total amount to be paid over that period, but I don't think we have to appropriate the money, that it it's just like the snow plowing.
Well, you're saying that he's already got the money.
But we didn't, we took it out.
I've already dissolved, like.
All three of it, no, no, all all three of these lines, the mileage was dissolved with the contingency, we talked about this, with the contingency that this would go on the June ballot, and if it failed.
I thought we didn't take it out, because in that meeting, we discussed, because I said I wasn't, that was one of the words, I said I wasn't in favor of, and so I thought we weren't making decisions knowing that it might not go on the June ballot.
The mileage, the mileage came out of all of them, and, but but the plan was, if the full board didn't move it forward, then the contingency fund, if approved, you know, would pay for the mileage, and that's still the backup plan, so the article failed, but.
Well, we could have asked for approval to uh lease a car and appropriate the money to pay for it, all in that ballot, in June.
Well, right, that was the, that was the plan.
So it it, as Lennox says, we can't, can't do that.
So you always have the buyback option at the end of the lease too.
Yeah, if you choose to, yeah, yeah, we did something you evaluate, I just wouldn't pay for it upfront, that's all.
So the question would be to lease it and appropriate X amount of dollars for the.
Well, I think we gotta find out, what car do you want, what's the, what's the cost of the car, what's the lease for how many miles? Then we can run the numbers and see what's on the line.
And the mileage could be paid, I I hear what you're saying, Dan, and I'm happy to go back and and look at them, I mean, I, you're absolutely right, we had the conversation that I knew there was, you know, there was articles that not everybody supported.
I had asked that before, I wanted to make sure we did, we did render this problem when we got to this point.
Well, right, but it was never, but as, well, no, but as far as not taking it out, that, we didn't have that discussion, we definitely had the discussion that the board wasn't committing to any of the articles.
We kinda had to take it out, because if we hadn't taken it out, we don't, you know, what were you, six thousand dollars a year? You you left six thousand dollars in the the code office, then we turn over to buy a car, you know, it'd be all over, so I mean, finance can be all crazy, all for the little stuff, imagine that being left in there, wow. So, I mean, so we we really, at this point, either we make a decision tonight whether or not we're either gonna buy it, or we, but we do a lease, it's like doing a contract, except we can't do one of those where we take it back, and we're gonna penalize, so we have to finance the money for the three years.
I would say, we want the car under June ballot. I would say that we do some work to figure out, do we wanna lease or buy, and I think it's gonna be leased. And that that June article would have authorization to lease a vehicle for so many years, and an annual cost of this, and appropriate money for the first year to cover it.
Is that?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's what. I'm not, I I don't like leases, but in this particular case.
Yeah, I, I personally don't.
Yeah, that's, business, it makes sense to lease, personally, it does not.
Yeah.
So, and I I just think you have to separate that. Uh we can make some calls tomorrow and find out, because sometimes leases require a twenty-five hundred or whatever down payment, you know, so it might not just be jump into a monthly payment, you're gonna jump, you know, in order to get it down, they might, we might have it.
Right, we just need the annual amount, we have to move to the ballot question.
But I wanna, I wanna be that guy. You know, we talk follows to the snowplow bids and everything, you know, if you, so you're signing a contract for three-year lease, but you only appropriate money for one year. What's if we turn around next year and we don't get the funds to finance fund that?
Well, it seems to me the the um the warrant authorized the selectmen to enter into a three-year commitment. And so I I don't think, uh.
I mean, if that's the way it's read.
And and that's gonna be put someplace in the general government budget. And so it's not gonna be something that we can pick out, and it would not be on a separate article in the future, it would be contained within general government. And if anyone said, well, let's not appropriate money for the car, I said, well, you're likely to get sued if you do that.
What if, what if we wrote the article to uh appropriate funds uh budgeted through the general government?
Okay.
If you did that, that way there, it's in the line, okay, but the money's gotta come from somewhere, we gotta, we gotta have the authority to spend that money from somewhere. So normally, we would say out of the general fund or out of taxation, uh yeah, but we have to at least have the authority to pull it from a budget.
My guess is you can get a lease for three thousand dollars a month. Uh three, three hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And so we're talking about, you know, three, thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars, and you're right, the contingent, maybe we don't have to worry about appropriating money.
Right.
The contingency would take care of it.
And even if, you know, and 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 no department uh wants to hear this, but at the end of the day, if it doesn't pass, I mean, you know, we vote on general government as a whole, so if if his budget ends up overdrafting, because we have to pay him mileage, you know, it will be make up for somewhere else, I mean, it it will be fine, one way or the other, and we talked about that when we took it out.
Joyce, did you have a comment?
Yeah, look, if you don't mind, um I've leased cars now for fifteen years. And for right now, the car that I have is just a Kia. It's got the sunroof, it's got heated seats, air-conditioned seats, auto start, auto winter windows. It came with mud thingies all, you name it, it's got it for a Kia. It's a forty-two thousand dollar Kia.
Yep.
Four hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month.
Yep.
The only thing I've ever had to fix on it was when Buck knocked the side mirror off.
What's the term of the lease?
Three years.
Three years, that's typical.
Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand months.
A year? A year, or overall?
Fifteen thousand a year.
A year?
A year, per year.
Yeah, no, no, I I I I kinda like the idea myself, because um.
And and it covers everything, you know?
I I would rather have a new vehicle every three years, the simple reason is, I don't buy nothing on a lease, I mean, I buy it, I want own it. But in this case here, you know, I I sell my stuff on a black car, and I just pay whatever. With the lease, a lease, we get into a new rig every so many years, the maintenance is already covered, we don't, we add more money in for, you know, fixing stuff.
Well, the thing is, is my lease is up this year, and I like this car, and I'm now just kinda deciding.
Yeah, you wanna buy it or not.
If I wanna buy it or not, and I can buy it for.
We're gonna have to bid this.
Twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to bid it out, we get one estimate out of the ball pocket for us.
So for now, for tonight, is, do you wanna move forward, and what's the wording of the ballot?
Jason, will you come back in a couple seconds? Sorry about that.
No, no worries, I um, so when I started this whole process, I actually went through the leases, because I was trying to keep it under the six thousand dollars per year. I looked for, I was just looking for like little tax back like our librarian has, and it was right around four hundred dollars a month, and that, I think that was zero down.
Which is what we want, I I don't think we wanna put any.
And that's an all, and so I don't need any, I wasn't looking for anything big, I was looking for an all-wheel-drive vehicle to, that's good on gas, to hit me from point A to point B, and and then all that other stuff, so.
Yeah, because, you know, we'll figure out the gas and all that, I guess. You guys think that's a good idea to have and go back and look at, try to, you know, come back, because we're gonna have to need multiple, we gotta have three.
We're gonna have to take at least three. Yeah, we would, yeah, we had like three or four different options last time, um and.
I I'm saying.
We'll go ahead and do it again.
We're gonna have to look at multiple makes, we just can't decide it's gonna be Honda, unless they're the Hyundai, and unless there's a really good reason to have that, there are competitors out there, and we oughta, you know, bid it up.
He's gonna look at Subarus, whatever you're gonna look at, and, you know, we we should be able to look at, see what's best maintenance plan and all that. If they throw some oil changes in there and all that.
So last time, we went with a Subaru, we went GM, I think we went with a Ford and Nissan, and so we just got, we just had a variety of them. Um they were all from different dealerships, so that, no, we weren't saying, okay, we're gonna go to this one in Kennybuck only, it was, we we went for a variety of them.
Have you got enough about what we wanna do?
I'm not, sir.
Great.
So that means we're not gonna put that on the June.
No, we are.
Oh, yeah, we just got change, we got change.
Right, again, I'm just trying to get the wording for Brad, he's out working the articles, we don't run out of time. Uh the the road commissioner's changing from two to one, everybody's on the same page for that one?
Yep, yeah, good with that.
Give me, give me a minute.
Yes, sir.
Not knowing how the snow plowing's gonna come out.
Oh, true.
Does that alter this in any way?
I don't believe so, the the problem is, is um I mean, there's nobody that's gonna build jumper in to do it anyways, I don't know that I know of, so.
But if there's someone who's, if the snow plowing isn't good, then we have a better chance of having someone do a smaller district as opposed to a larger, wouldn't that make it easier for us if we have to do with that scenario? I feel like that was something that was discussed, like one versus two, if we.
Oh, no, no, that that that's on the contract part, we're gonna do two, on the contract part, because of snow plowing. We're talking about the road commissioner itself, so, you know, what we're talking about is, we're, we're, I think what Todd's worried about is, the snow plowing thing doesn't go through, and then he has to hire these people up, whether or not he can handle both sides.
But he's the only one running at this point, he's the only one interested in the position on either side.
I know, I know, and um it's 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 almost a necessity that we contract this out, the snow plowing, if we don't.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I mean, we we've got an issue.
We may have.
And I, and somehow, the townspeople need to understand that.
But that, we're gonna discuss that at town meet.
Right.
So that's obviously gonna be something.
Okay, all right.
This is, this is just, just beyond, you know, because right now, he doesn't, he wouldn't become road commissioner until be right before this, on the other side.
Right, this, this isn't gonna take effect until they, I believe, Brent said the expiration of his, of the term, not the one that's up now, the other one. So it's gonna be, you know, a little while before it's combined.
There won't be another, but that's where then, there'll be no nomination papers again.
For the other positions, right.
So it really takes place now. It would take place now, because.
It's a short term, right?
It's already, it's, yeah, so there's, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to see how it turns out.
I guess we're.
No, no, that's the way it has to go, because you're maybe, so there's no more nomination papers, nobody run.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm on the attorney, so.
Yeah, unless you're gonna do like it's a one-year term or something where it expires.
No, it's gonna be one position every three years, right?
But I mean, like you, like David said, you wouldn't be able to take that nomination papers, because it would.
Do towns that have uh have contracted this snow plowing, like Shapley, how many road agents do they have?
Two.
Shapley, but Shapley's the only town other than Acton, which Acton's, it's the only one that.
Elton has one, Lebanon has one.
Nobody around here, everybody has one, even Lebanon, they got a hundred miles of road, um, I'm not saying much, but, um, but uh we are, right now, the only two towns right now in the area that has two road commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Because everybody's going to, you know, highway departments and stuff like that.
All right. Uh the last one is the ambulance, um we did speak to the fire chief, um and he would like to see the number be at six hundred and fifty thousand. He's concerned at the, of the tariffs and other things that might be coming forward, doesn't know what's gonna happen, he's about to have.
Oh, I didn't know that was coming from Canada.
Some of them do.
I think that makes sense, I'd rather have that.
An amount not to exceed is what he's looking for, so.
I, you know, I, I guess like, that's the number he's been using.
Mm-hmm.
Um I guess before we sign off on it, I guess that's the only way we can do it. Uh but before we sign off, obviously, we have to see the price of it, and we'll see what he's spec'd out early on, so I mean, where the fella say, right?
He says that, yeah, he says his specs right, he says the quotes that he's gotten in right now are somewhere around five eighty, I believe he said five, you know, five sixty to five eighty, he's gotten a couple of them, but he's just trying to leave wiggle room for.
Well, that's a lot, that's a lot of wiggle room, seventy thousand dollars wiggle room.
That was fully outfitted?
I think I've made my view clear on this.
Yes.
I I'm not in favor of this. Um not to have, I I would be very open, if a grant is possible, to looking for a grant to pay for this. I think to add a second ambulance at a cost of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the the amount of times that it's truly gonna be needed for Acton, seems like a great deal of money. And uh we've operated with one, I believe, for a number of years, and so we've asked for some data. Have we got?
I believe he shared some of that in one of the.
Yeah, but it really, it was, it was, I I had, I had asked you, Jennifer.
Yeah, he uh, he gave the number of calls.
I I asked for some very specific information about the calls, and I assumed that made it to him, I don't know, perhaps it didn't. Obviously, this isn't my decision, but I just wanted to let you know that, given what I know right now, I would probably not support appropriating six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a second ambulance, so for whatever that's worth.
The rest of you feel?
I'm in favor of it, I think it is an important purchase, and it should be put up to voters, and they they should have the final say.
I have no problem with it going to voters, but I'm just saying that I'm gonna not support it.
Because of the three years. Because of the three years that I've been told that it's gonna take to get it. Um, I would, I mean, obviously we need it in three years. If it takes three years to get it, I'm not in favor of hanging seventy thousand dollars extra out there. That that I'm not in favor of. Uh, so, I mean, he's come up with these prices. Uh, I mean, I can see a certain percentage, but that that's a little, a little much.
Six might be better.
We're talking five hundred and eighty, um, yeah, maybe six, that's still fifty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Uh, and, oh, I'm in favor of putting it to the voter. Um, I just, I think before we do the six fifty, I I like this, I'm chopping that number down a little bit.
I I still don't understand why we aren't looking for a grant. I have not.
Oh, no, I I I do.
Given a good explanation for that, that that is convincing to me. And if there's a possibility for a grant, then I think we should do that. And if we don't get the grant, then come back and consider whether or not.
Now, can we still do the grant? If we appropriate the money to buy it, doesn't mean we have to.
Yeah, just maybe don't have to use a lot of money.
Well, the problem, the only, the only reason that I'm, I feel that we gotta put this through is because say he does all the homework, he doesn't get a grant. It's taken, he's telling us it's taken three years to get it. So if we screw around for a couple of years and then we'll be five years old before we get the, that's, it's all the homework.
That that, uh, I, not having been convinced of the need, that doesn't bother me. But, um, look, I understand that it, all it takes is one situation.
Yeah, alright, alright.
And, but you know something, I could've said the same thing about the police. It only takes one situation where, you know, we have a situation, someone's home and a person needs to be protected. And, you know, there was, it was seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that got rejected, so I'm just trying to understand this. I'm sorry, I'm doing this publicly, it's a mind dump, but I just, I don't get it. I don't understand the balance. To me, police enforcement is, you know, and fire, it's going hand in hand. And we can, we can say we don't need police enforcement, but we gotta spend another six fifty on a second ambulance that we've never had. I don't get it.
I think at the end of the day with the police, I mean, the public tells us what they wanted, and I think the public again will tell us whether or not they agree with the decision.
I'm I'm fine with putting it forward. I just wanna make sure, I I, I'm telling you, I personally don't have all the information that I would like in order to make an informed decision.
My only, my only understanding with the grant was, he didn't think that he could qualify for the grant unless he gave up the current ambulance, is why I understood when he explained it to us.
That was one of the things, and then also not, they're not being guaranteed with, like David's name, if he does, and I will say, the chief has done a great job of finding grants and doing the work, and I have no doubt they will look into it, but you can't guarantee it's gonna be granted if that's extended. And that's where that concern comes from, that share with David. And I think we can allocate whatever the number we decided, we decided six hundred. Says he does have a grant, he's not gonna use up all six hundred, we'll take out whatever the grant.
He would be to get half of it.
Yeah.
The current ambulance.
But it sets the steps in place.
Is what, seven years old, and it's only halfway through its life expectancy. So, the the the.
But at ten years, it's supposed to be put on the back, and so.
Yeah, but you know, I I I do have an issue with that, okay, and I understand. We get, and I I know what chief, he gets told this is how many years, but at the same time, these these ambulances of fire trucks, Sanford, Biddeford, all these big, that's what they're doing, okay? They also go on a zillion more calls a day, okay, so it's a little different. I understand there is an expiration date, that ambulance has seventy thousand miles on it.
Seventy or eighty-five, something like that.
Where I come from, that's like a brand new truck.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking it's got a diesel in it, it should get two hundred thousand miles on it, because that's what it's supposed to get. But, uh, the last thing that we need is having an ambulance that has an issue because it's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, you know, we don't wanna be in that case either, so. I mean, I'm in favor of putting the money forward, not the six fifty, I think that we gotta shave that down a little bit. But I think we, as a select board, should be pushing our chief to still try to get a grant. Even if it's for half of it, I don't care if it's for thirty thousand bucks, you know, at least something to help with it, but the idea of having a second ambulance, I don't know, you know, I mean, that might, if that's what's making us, so we can't get a grant, that kinda sucks, but, uh, there's gotta be some other stuff out there. And I I I'm sure there is, but I I have no issue putting it forward with.
I I think the people should vote on it.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, uh, uh, sharing my thoughts. And I'll, I'll stop now, so yes, we should put it.
So, I'll drop the question, I'll double-check, uh, his numbers, and I'll come back to you, because the number's the last thing to fill in. It's the, it's the verbiage of the warrant article we need to work on, so we'll, I'll talk to him about his two quotes and see if we can get that number down some, and then I'll bring it back to you, but Brad's gotta write the actual article. And I'm assuming that all of these, we wanna talk about, have been raised and appropriated, right? We're not using all these articles that have been raised and appropriated.
I don't think the ambulance would be appropriated. I don't think we would add that to the tax base. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I need to know if you're gonna.
I would, I would take it out of reserves.
So you're, are you doing that at all? Because that's.
I I I, well, no, I think the sheriff ought to be raised and appropriated.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm talking about the ambulance.
The ambulance to me is a capital improvement.
Yeah, I think that's what we did with the tanker when we bought it.
We did.
We just took the money and bought it.
I I, you know, all we got, all we, all we heard about the whole budget season was, we got all this money and all you know, and not buying nothing. We didn't run it out of the undesigned fund, um, be more ammo, so I I think that's.
I would never put a one-time expense of that size in the tax base.
How about the car?
Debt finance it, or I would use reserves?
The car.
And I don't think we should be debt financing that.
Well, the car has to be, uh, uh, tasked because we're gonna pull it out of the general government.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, operating expense.
Yeah.
You're gonna say it out loud, got it.
Well, I don't know, I'm just, I'm answering the question as.
No, I know, I didn't say that. So the ambulance is on a sign, I mean, you could take some of the ambulance out of, on a sign, you could take some of it out and raise it appropriate, but you wanna take it all out?
The the big capital stuff that we we should be taking down the undesigned fund.
Because we're talking about that anyways, we're talking about looking at those things and planning in the future.
You put that in the tax base. The tax rate would spike.
It would.
Significant, I haven't done numbers, but it would be a big.
I don't wanna see the seventeen or seventeen.
If that's what we told people was gonna happen, it would never pass, no.
Right, it's definitely going to be more likely to pass, like it's not gonna affect the tax rate.
Yeah, that's right.
And and also at the same time, it kills two birds with one stone, brings down our undesigned a little bit, and we put it where we belong, you know?
My only concern is, we haven't yet completed the capital plan.
Yeah.
So I don't know what else is out there, in particular for the roads. And the reserves, uh, aren't, you, we have reserves, but they aren't, you know, excessive, in my view. And so we're always gonna wanna keep some reserves in hand. So if we spend the money on the ambulance, it is likely to be, that's a choice that says we're gonna have to say no something down the road, on roads. And it would be great to have that capital budget, so we understand with that trade-off.
I think right now, what we're budgeting on the roads right now and was not getting spent, I think we're in pretty good shape right now.
David, I'll, I'll take your, I'll trust you.
Well, no, I I I just think that we've, we've inflated that up so much. I I think, I'm looking at capital improvements, capital improvements to me is, uh, new fire trucks, new, uh, what?
A bridge, maybe?
A bridge, a bridge, I guess could be. Um, you know, property stuff, you know, uh, new roofs, stuff like that. Um, but the road stuff, I mean, right now, we've inflated that budget. Well, what what's this year's paving project? It's, uh, almost four hundred thousand? So that's, you know, that's doubled over the last so many years, so I mean, just on the paving side of it. And that's lower than it was last year.
So what's that do about, uh, well, it depends on what you're doing, but if you're doing a reclaiming, that's probably a couple miles, three miles?
No, not if it reclaim. It used, well, it isn't now, it used to be rule of thumb was a hundred thousand dollars would get you a mile of shim and overlay. But it's more than that now because of inflation and everything else, but then when you start adding the the reclaiming, the construction, especially the way we could.
I was just trying to get a sense, with a four hundred thousand dollar budget, how many miles of road can you do with that?
Delivered in road projects, only forty-two hundred feet.
Yes, but remember, we talked to Will, and when we talked to Will about how his future plans, and we talked about maybe instead of huge projects, some shim and overlays, maintenance on some of the roads, and when he does that, he'll be able to get a lot more area done.
Uh, my only point is there's choices. If we wanna put the ambulance above everything else, fine. But that means something is going to suffer at some point.
Yeah.
And we just oughta know that and be prepared for it. We don't have an endless pot of reserves to just do anything we want. It's limited.
And what it may do to us also is, uh, it may determine how much we start putting towards the offsetting taxes if we take.
Oh, it's set, it's gonna affect that.
It's gonna affect it.
Good point for the public hearing, which will be required to have.
The school reserves, I don't think they're gonna be putting much as tax relief going forward. Their reserves are pretty much where they, they're at a minimum level.
After the, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, what did they do last year, two, four hundred thousand?
I don't know.
Something like that.
The only, the only, the only light at the end of the tunnel is, he said that he is trying to put in for a new tanker truck.
Yeah, but I think he has a good chance of getting a grant for that.
He can get a grant for that, so if that's the case, great.
Well, they're looking for a new truck too, fire truck.
Yeah, the tanker. Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's, because he's a place that he thinks, he's seen a good hit for that.
So, well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this is the big expense and maybe grants are gonna take care of the next big expense of that part of it. Um, we start putting the capital plan together, um, and then we'll start figuring out what we need for everything else, so.
Okay.
Um.
Boy, that was a long discussion, wasn't it, Jennifer?
Yeah, they are, yeah.
There's a lot of kind of good stuff.
A lot of good points for the public hearing, but at least gives me enough to get the questions right, because if we're gonna hold this off.
So you're gonna have him give us some sort of different number than the six fifty, or?
Yes, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back to him. I mean, my goal is, at least for Brad, to be able to start writing them tomorrow, we just want that number out any time. I just want the, you know, the text of the verbiage of how that warrant article, that ballot's gonna be written, but I'll speak to the.
I believe that he got a quote. It may not have been a legal quote.
He did.
And it had a five in it.
It did.
So how we got to six fifty, I don't, you know?
He, just yesterday when he was in, it it was somewhere between five sixty and five eighty, he got two quotes.
Yeah.
His words to me was, he's concerned now with the tariffs and increases by the time it goes to then.
I'm signing a contract, you know, get a lot of contract on it, I mean, obviously, we all, you like to add ten, fifteen percent somewhere, kicking around just in case there's a change order or whatever, but I mean, they sell enough of these things, that they should have a pretty good idea what they're gonna cost.
And remember, there's a, there's a fire truck fund too, when you wanna assign.
He could probably get a quote and they'd hold it for six months.
Yeah.
It's not a commitment, but get a quote, hold the price for six months.
We saw the.
And get us through all of this, and it probably would have a five in front of it.
Well, you know, you you figure the seventy thousand dollars that's left in there for slush, that would pay our deputy sheriff.
Right.
Or buy a new, couple new cars, so, I mean, if you look at it like that, you know, so I I don't think that.
I will get the number down more precise.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it for the true ballot vote.
Okay, we're gonna move on to be an abatement.
Alright, we have an abatement. So, uh, we had an abatement request, this was filed by the property owner, which we haven't had, um, in a while, so this is, um, let's begin with the property owner, David and Sheila Cabana, uh, for a property that they own, um, went back and forth with the assessors, the land value was eventually adjusted to reflect the development of the parcel. Um, the land value has been dropped by eighty thousand nine twenty, giving them an abatement of five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. So when somebody applies for an abatement, they have to provide to O'Donnell several, um, different properties, you know, around and compare a case. I can tell you that, um, they've been going back and forth for, for a long time on this one, um.
O'Donnell believes it's right since he's.
They do, since last year, yes.
Wow, okay.
I did tell the property owner that it was being moved forward and and his, he would like to negotiate the amount. So we've already talked about the next step.
I'll make a motion to approve an abatement of five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents on that lot number one-two-four dash zero-two-four uh, for property in the name of David and Sheila Cabana.
Second.
All in favor?
David, twenty-fifth.
Six.
Second, I'm sorry.
Here, sir.
And the audit contracts went from ten to sixteen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get any more abatements? Is that it?
I'm sorry?
Is there any more abatements?
No, sorry.
Tomorrow's supposed to be a beauty.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
A little spoiled Saturday, it was sixty degrees out. Sunday, Monday, Sunday was cold in the morning. Oh. The forty, forty degrees.
Okay, thank you.
I don't like this type of transition, if the heat's just still on when it's still weathered side, it's too hot.
Who's thinking, I care, I'm too warm, I don't have a heater on the truck?
That's all I have.
That's twelve thousand with the fixed assets that we've issued.
Oh, okay, thank you. There you go.
Okay, freedom of information request.
Alright, so we have three this week. Um, the first one received from Nick Curtis is looking for, um, any and all emails regarding tax map two oh eight lot eleven dash, or two oh eight eleven, I'm not sure if that's and seventeen or dash seventeen, but nevertheless, we know what property he's referring to, any and all plans, approval conditions, and a copy of the property file. So we will get that one taken care of. Uh, the next is from Roland Waterhouse, he's looking for, uh, the municipal warrants from nineteen ninety through two thousand and five. And then the last is from Jerome Schlescher, or maybe.
Schleger.
What is it?
I think it's Schleger.
Really? S C H, okay. Anyway, so Jerome is looking for an application, um, by Martell Estates for an amendment to the previously approved Site Location and Development Act permit application, received by the town of Acton on Friday, March twenty-first. So we will get those done, um, the the state, um, we've also got Brad adjusting your freedom of information policy, essentially, uh, it it's gonna come to a point where you don't need to have a policy, we're gonna ask you to rescind it next week and just reference state statute, because our current policy, for example, allows us to charge twenty-five cents a copy, state law only allows you to charge ten cents a copy.
Supersede, no superseding.
Yeah, you can't supersede it, so we'll follow state law, figure out if anybody's gonna have charges here, I mean, they'll, they'll pay for the copies if nothing else.
As long as we're consistent, I don't really care.
We will be consistent, I promise you that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll start with the, uh, three.
Okay.
R H R Smith, two thousand twenty-five contract.
Yes, uh, as you all know, we've been with R H R Smith the years as our auditor. We made a number of attempts to find, uh, to, to bid it out and have some considered operate, uh, alternatives, uh, unsuccessfully. Um, I will say with the addition of, um, Mark Roy, I'm feeling that we have good sort of checks and balances in the town, and I think the, the information that we're getting, at least for me, I find it quite good, and I hope you all do as well. Um, so I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about the combination of, uh, what Mark is doing, what our treasurer does, and now what R H R Smith does. So the fact that we're with him for a long time, um, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with. Last year, our audit fee was twelve thousand dollars.
Correct.
And I don't think that's changed since I've been here.
Yeah, many years.
Many years, same fee. No one holds their fee flat. Uh, the, the, you know, you always get a, you know, an inflation plus one to two percent increase in these things, and they haven't done that. They put in a, a request this year for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, uh, which, you know, they, they've made up for it, I think, um, um, I think the town net-net made out very well from, uh, the pricing they provided us, so I would recommend that we engage, that's the motion now, engage R H R Smith for the audit for the upcoming fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-five with a, with a fee of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second it.
Do you wanna ask for any comment, or if there is any?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good, yeah, good idea. Uh, any comment on this? Nope, okay, I'm just, uh, um, so we have a second, a second minute, all in favor?
Okay. I gotta tell you, the audit went very well this year. Would you agree with Jennifer? You and Lorna, uh, deal with that the most, and if I didn't mention it before, I think this is probably the first year we had a management letter with no comments. They had no, no prior adjustments, no recommendations for improvements. They had no, no audit adjustments, no recommendations for improvements, they were very satisfied with everything that was done. Okay, so, uh, who, who should sign this, David?
Um, I would say at least a couple of you, but you're signing under the government, cuz the treasurer signs above that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the letter is addressed to David as the chair, so.
Oh, okay, well, he should.
Get it on the signature. I'll get all signed.
I'll let, she'll fill in this one.
Okay. I, uh, made a mess here.
Was that, there was only one signature required.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, a contractor would like to get at least one more, just to make sure we have three.
No, I mean, but there was only one place to sign, yes, okay.
Yeah, good. I think it's back the way it was.
She can figure it out.
Yeah. Did I screw it up?
No, but can I just get a third one, just we have a majority?
Oh, I thought you said that you only wanted two.
Well, no, I know, I.
Okay, sir.
But I said that too, that's true.
Uh, did you?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, John had a look at it. They're trying to figure out why it's not getting passed down.
They didn't hear it either.
Yes, they did.
That's not enough not to say anything.
I was just feeling left out, that's why. Oh, yeah, I, I wanna do it too.
You heard me, you too, you both did, see?
Okay.
She marked it, somebody marked it first this time.
I did that, but he's made wrong.
Okay, so, uh, during the executive session, there will be a decision, I'm sure, at the end of this, so.
Okay.
Let everybody know, stick around, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to go into executive session M R S A four five six A one dash personnel at seven twenty P M.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I need to come out of executive session M R S A four five six A dash one personnel at seven thirty P M.
Second, all in favor?
Who's the liaison?
John.
John. You wanna make that motion, John?
Yeah, good idea.
So I would like to make a motion to appoint Dave Riley. As the deputy code enforcement officer, effective.
Isn't there more on there?
Um, until six thirty twenty twenty-five, on today, the twenty-sixth of March twenty twenty-five.
Does it say deputy local plumbing as well?
Deputy local, deputy local plumbing inspector also.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, John, I should make sure that my first shows the both positions.
Thank you, guys.
I didn't know there was.
Yeah, there, that's good, actually, that one's.
Thought you were recording, so you're recording, but I guess you're right, cuz lots of all that, yeah.
Jason has the authority to do one or both, so.
It's a big deal, and I think Jason should be commended for supporting him with the training, allowing him to take on that training and the work that Dave has done. To, to complete all of that, uh, this puts the town in a really good spot, so, thank you, Jason, and congratulations to Dave.
Yeah, yeah, this, this works out well, I mean, uh, having two people in the office, when one goes out, the other one can take over. Um, and he did it pretty short, pretty fast.
It's an important function.
So thanks, Jason.
Thank you, guys, have a great one.
Good night.
Last on the list appointment.
That was it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna do it again?
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's do some public comment now, huh? Uh, anybody got any public comment? Mark, on up, you're bringing it up, please.
You know, what I like is here. Yeah, just a couple of questions, one of them, I was thinking tonight when you were all talking about the, um. Capital purchases. Yeah, six hundred thousand maybe, or five seventy-five, uh, whatever it turns out to be. Would it be helpful or not if one of you, Tom, I would think, turned around and said? Did, oh, did I say Tom, uh, turned around and said, look, people, you know, you've always said, what are we gonna do with this money? How are we gonna use it, giving it back, blah, 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 okay. To say, look, we have X amount of dollars, if we look at this, this pot, pot A, pot B, pot C, pot D. We've got five hundred dollars, what do you want us to do with it? Now we're gonna take out, you know, this big amount for this or that, or would that be, you know, it was just a, an idea?
I, I haven't discussed this with the board, but, um, I have asked to, uh, have the capital budget. Uh, drafted, um, and Mark is working on that, and he said end of April, is how he calls it. End of April, then I wanna bring it back to the, to board. It's got all the information that the capital planning committee, plus some additional information.
Sure.
Has been brought forward, so we can look at that, the ambulance will be in there and a, a, a variety of other things. Uh, so that will define what the, um, possible needs are for capital over the next five to seven years, I'm not sure what the timeframe is.
Right, yeah.
I will obviously be able to describe what money we have.
Yeah.
And what I think we may be able to add to that from surpluses going forward.
Right.
Although with the reductions in budget that I'm seeing, we are not, we don't have any specific budgets that are going to build reserves. So we're on the down, the downward slope, and if we get to the point where we don't have a surplus, like we've been having, eight hundred thousand dollars. Those points are gonna cross and, and we're gonna have a problem, so I was gonna try to lay that all out. And, um, again, I haven't discussed it with the board, I'd like to do that at the public hearing where the ambulance is being discussed. Um, and I don't know how you all feel about that, but, uh, cuz I think it is a question of, you got capital funds, our reserves, and how are you gonna spend them? And this is a big ticket item, and I think it ought to be, um, it's not just a question, should we have an ambulance or not? Should we spend the money or not, given, given that need, at least as I think about it, so I'd like to put that all available, all out at the time of the public hearing. I'll try to make it short and not be long-winded the way I am, but I'll, I, I think people need to understand that, so that's my plan, Joyce.
I, well, thank you, because I think that, that, painting that picture, cuz it is exactly, you know. We just had a discussion at home, I'm gonna do a new car this year, somebody else wants a new boat.
Ah, the boat's pretty important.
Pretty sure the cash will win.
But, but, we, we, we were talking though about hopefully next year having this capital improvement fund that we can start funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that this is the last year that we make a capital improvement purchase, although, I'm going into that fund. You know, start building just for that stuff.
Right.
Um, and, and we could, that, Tom, gives us a layout of the money.
I, I would like to do that so that, uh, as people vote on this June referendum, they have an understanding of what it is. Uh, what our plan is, it may not be final, but at least they should, okay, yeah, they got it covered, and.
Right.
They got enough money to do everything else that we reasonably need to do, okay, or no, we don't, and we're gonna have to make some tough choices. I don't know where that is right now, and, uh, but I will, I will by the time we get to that public hearing, and if you're comfortable with my doing that, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
So they can think about that, and we'll, you know, we may or may not do it.
Uh, yeah, sometimes you need to paint a picture, I believe, um, second question. Did we ever buy that land on the lake?
Yeah, uh, okay.
The one down here?
So there's no resolution?
Oh, oh, the boat launch.
Did, did we ever, what was the last?
So they're still working on it, um, I last spoke to Len Kowski about it, probably two, three, two weeks ago at best. Um, it feels like he's made, the seller feels like he's made progress, uh, the bank, which was not a local bank, more of a, you know, nationwide bank, was acquiring. A survey and some property assessment values, so essentially there was a mortgage on both sides of the road, not just the house. So they, the mortgage company has to agree to cut it out, and before he, they're willing to cut it out, they wanna make sure the amount of the loan can cover, you know, just the other side, so. They are making progress, and I expect hopefully it won't go a lot longer.
It's kinda hard to sell stuff you don't own.
Really, yeah, there, there's a, there's a place down by my house, about the second one after the culvert, now if I could sell that house. I don't know that though, yeah, okay, number three, um, these articles that y'all have been talking about tonight for chil- for. June or perhaps July, uh, however it works out, um, are they gonna be coming to Wharton Finance, uh, in April, March, May?
Yeah, they'll have to, no, no, it, no, it's gonna be sooner than that, so the goal is to have them written by the end of the week. Tie down the numbers next week and turn them over, I mean, we don't, time is of the essence when you're dealing with a referendum.
So you'll let Leslie know as.
I will, Leslie will let, let her know.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment?
I have just one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, last week, or I, I think it was last week, the week before, Jennifer, you had noted that, um, the town report that you were gonna be doing in PDF. And I just wanted to say thank you, I know that has been something that folks have always had concerns about not getting it in time, I appreciate you listening and. Being creative and coming up with that solution, I, I, I really appreciate that, when you said that, I was so excited, so I just wanna thank you for your efforts in making that happen. And my other thing is, I know that the excitement of budget, whereas we're getting to town meeting is kind of over, as we can tell by the lack of people in the audience. I personally love having people in the audience, so I do encourage people, even though we're not talking about budgetary items, to try to make an effort to come down here. As a person who still doesn't open in the town, I appreciate seeing new faces, hearing conversations. It allows us as a board to be informed and making sure the decisions that we're making are decisions that the people want, so. Again, I know it's not always the most exciting meeting to come to, but it is appreciative when you folks do come out and, and we get the opportunity to interact with you. That was it.
Well said.
Good, awesome, anybody else have anything, no, okay, well, what are your motion?
I move to adjourn at seven forty P M.
Second, all in favor?